So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for March 17th, 6:30 PM. And the mayor is not able to attend today, so acting in his stead. Ms. Yell, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Redden is absent. Sarah Hall.
Here.
Julia Walker.
Present.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Rihanna Higgins. Brian Callahan.
Here.
Andrew Bogart.
All right, why don't we stand for the president's allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay. Please just come up to the podium here and speaking in our group, but first I just want to read a quick statement. A few reminders before we begin public comment. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility, be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and you will not receive a response at this time. You'll have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee email. Welcome, thank you.
Thanks. So I just made a couple notes.
Okay, if you could just introduce yourself and your address.
Yeah, okay, I'm Grant Acosta, I'm at 17 Arlington Street and two kids in the district. So I just wanted to voice my support for more discussions of getting cell phones at schools. I had a ninth and seventh grader. And the high school policy of checking in phones at the beginning of class is helping to minimize and or limit classroom distractions. But I believe that we need to do a little more. We're not addressing the greater issue of mental health and no release of cell phone usage in adolescence. Things that I know agree that health and safety of our children is of the utmost importance and 15 years ago we didn't have the information that we have today. Today we know that there's a direct correlation between time spent on social media and increased mental health issues, issues such as anxiety, depression, psychological, body image problems, food disruptions, and it can also potentially affect academic performance and real life social skills. I was disappointed when my son, when he met his guidance counselor, he actually was advised that he should connect to the high school via Instagram, via their various Instagram pages. I didn't realize that they have one for the high school, one for the guidance department, athletic department, all the different sports. Apparently they have different pages. And as a parent that had tried to limit social media, it was just a little discouraging that El Samke was inundated with having to access social media. And why would we as parents not do everything in our power to support our children's mental health during these critical years in their lives, the time when mental health is among adolescents has as at its worst? So I just wanted to, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom? All right, thank you. All right, we'll close public comment. And the first item on our regular agenda is introduction of our new athletic director. Very exciting.
All right. I'm not on my A game fair, a little under the weather, so.
Oh, sorry.
My enthusiasm might not come shining as much as it usually does. And I'll call Mr. Wolf. Why don't you come on, Mr. Wolf? Mr. Wolf, why don't you come on?
We know Mr. Wolf will have that enthusiasm.
Yes, that's why.
We're counting on that.
The Luke Jumper Jacks.
A little boost.
Jumper Jacks, you know what I mean? Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank Mr. Wolf, his team, for a very inclusive process for our athletic director search. Had many students involved, faculty, parents, community members, and I think the process, although it took a little more time, I think we wound up with a perfect fit for the New buryport public schools in leading our athletic department into the future. I would just like to introduce Ms. Anna DeVito as our new athletic director. And Anna, why don't you come on up and we'll give you a round of applause right now. Now it's time for us to embarrass you with all the accolades. Well, first, Anna brings a rich athletic tradition to Newburyport as a high school athlete. She was a star athlete for her high school and then received a degree in sports management. And then from there, also did work at Harvard in the intramural program, sports athletic program, and now is currently the Font Fawn Academy Athletic Director currently. She's very passionate about student development, she identification through sport. While at Font Fawn, she built an athletic program grounded in collaboration and culture that fosters growth in all stakeholders. She also started an intramural program at Font Fawn too, which is something that the community has been looking for us to do here in Newburyport. While being a full-time athletic director, she's also a collegiate coach. She's coached men's and women's track at Curry College and works at in the mornings before she starts her full day. She brings a lot of coaching experience, administrative experience to this position, and we are very excited for her vision and leadership in Newburyport Public Schools. Ms. DeVito?
Thank you so much. Thank you for welcoming me tonight. I'm so honored to be your new athletic director. I feel very humbled, not to sound like a broken record, but I feel like I really live and breathe athletics. I really value what it did for me as a student. And that's kind of really my vision when I lead, when I talk to students, when I'm interacting with parents, that's my approach and that's how I try to live my day to day. I deeply value what I do and hopefully that shows through in your community. Everyone has been so welcoming and so friendly and kind already. I'm so eager to start. Just thank you so much.
Ms. DeVito, actually, if you could just say after, does anyone have any questions?
It's quick to run away, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Any questions? Okay. I just want to welcome you. I think, you know, as you know, Newburyport has a very enthusiastic and supportive community for sports. Excited to collaborate with you and I hope you'll see the school committee as a resource for you. If you have anything that you see needs work on or that we can collaborate on, so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the warrants. We have two different warrants, so I guess we've.
Three.
Oh, three.
Well, we have one, but there are three combined.
Okay, well, I'll turn it over to Member Callahan.
All right. I move the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $703,071. Almost couldn't do hundreds placing them. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts. This warrant is larger than the average one because of a van purchase for, will hold, what, three wheelchair students?
Correct.
And what's the total capacity of the van? Twelve or nine?
Three and then five passages and a driver and so seven total.
Seven total. And you'll have to plot more of that when you do your update, right?
Yes, I can do it right now.
All right, add.
Should we complete the motion?
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, any second? Second? Thank you. Okay, discussion, Superintendent?
Sure. So as you all know, for, I think for the past few years, we've been, on the agenda has been acquiring a handicap accessible van for our students, wheelchair accessible. And Mr. James McSweeney has been looking for a van and we saw one up in New England Motor Car Company this week, this past week. Mr. McSweeney checked out the van and it really fit all of our criteria. It's going to have the ability for three wheelchairs. And then what we also really liked about the van is the equity piece in the sense that there'll also be other passengers that will be with the students. So for this purchase, it's in great shape. Mr. McSweeney inspected it. It's a 2016, has 30,000 miles. It'll be our own van that will be able to utilize for various trips, athletic trips, and really accommodating, I think, a lot of the families that really expressed this to us. So we felt this was an opportunity. The reason why it's on your warrant for tonight is because last week we put the PO to put it on hold, but obviously there's other districts that are interested in this van, so we wanted to make sure we purchased it before. So the two areas that we're going to utilize is a contingency expense out of building and grounds and then also $25,000 from custodial and ground supplies. Talking to Mr. Brooks, I think once we purchased the van, then once we start to utilize it, we could defray some transportation costs and then we can, once we start to that, the savings we have in transportation, we could shift the funding towards circuit breaker. So for us for tonight, it's the approval to access the van, so it's our van. And then we just move forward from there. So that's why it was added to the agenda.
Questions? Yeah.
This might be a naive question, but I was just curious, why do we need the van if, you know, with our bus transportation contract, some of the coach buses can fit wheelchairs? Because I thought the request from the public was to make sure that students in wheelchairs can fit on the normal bus.
Yeah, so that's the, for the bigger buses are for your bigger field trips. Having a van, so this would be for some of our students that are involved in athletics, that are doing the team manager, things like that, they can travel with the team and it could be day-to-day, day-to-day use for us.
Oh, okay.
So down the road, let's, for example, internships, things like that, where those students need to get access to different. So it gives us more flexibility within the district instead of contracting out.
Any other questions, Mr. Bogart?
Just on the size, because you said that you could have a range of folks on the bus. It's like, how many other students?
So it would be five other passengers and then three wheelchair accessible.
And it sounds like a great opportunity to defray transportation costs. Can you just talk that through a little bit? I didn't follow.
Sure. So basically, when we have under special education in transportation, we right now contracted with Salter for the day-to-day pickup and that. So for us to have our own van, it might give us more flexibility to get our students to and from school and not need to go through a transportation.
It would be two schools, not just field trips.
It could be.
Sporting events. Excellent. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I think it's going to give us more, two things. For me, it's always about providing more equity for all of our students and then listening to the parents, expressing some of their concerns. And then once we have the van, now we can look at how can we maximize the use of this to defray potential transportation costs.
Excellent.
Follow-up question on the van style. Do you, does it require a certain license to drive or is it a normal?
It's just a regular, normal van. And then our SRO, our police, and then also our Director of Health Services will do trainings on how to make sure we're securing the wheelchairs and things like that, hopefully.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. All right, the next item on our, and that was probably the most discussion we have had on a warrant in a long time. Next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from the March 3rd, 2025 meeting. If there are, I'll accept a motion to approve. So moved. Second?
I was here.
Come on, guys.
And you were here.
That's right, we do have limited. Yes, we do. All right, any discussion or amendments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. You too.
You don't have, you're not required to abstain. You can, it's optional.
We weren't here.
Just because you weren't there. It doesn't matter. Yes. You can abstain if you want to. You don't have to. All right, the next item on the agenda is student representative report. Mr. McKnight.
Okay. So in the Brezden Hand, we are excited to share a collaborative project between Mr. Bradgar Lotus Media Class, our kindergarten teachers and students. Last week, we started creating a video designed to help new families gain a deeper understanding of how special kindergarten is at the Brezden Hand School. As most of our incoming kindergarteners who have not attended preschool appear, we hope this initiative will ease their transition into Newburyport Public Schools. This project will highlight a day in the life of a kindergartner, showing curriculum, age-appropriate tasks, and the ways we support emotional well-being for our youngest learners. Through this effort, families will get a limited engagement in nurturing environment that we can provide. It is sure to be an adorable and meaningful resources, resource for our incoming families as they begin this exciting journey. We will share the final product when it's completed. Read-a-thon. Today was the first day of our PTO-sponsored Clipper Read-a-thon. We are excited for a mental two weeks with library campouts, book character parades, and lots and lots of reading. Thank you to the PTO for making this happen. We have a number of parent volunteers coming in during the Read-a-thon. A huge thank you as well to the entire Brezden Hand staff for making this such a special time for our students and especially our librarian Renee Ames for her vision in creating an inclusive campout in the library that all students will love. Responsibility at the Brezden Hand. Community service of Newburyport toilet paper drive. Our students had a wonderful assembly last week to kick off responsibility month. The whole school is working towards getting likes for their responsible acts. Let's see how many we can get by the end of the month. Last month, we did 1,000 acts of kindness. Can we get to 1,000 acts of responsibility? We think so. Part of being responsible is being responsible for helping your community. Brezden Hand students are partnering with new, community service of Newburyport on a toilet paper drive. We figured out that if everyone in the school brought in one roll of toilet paper, we would have over 700 rolls of toilet paper. If anyone listening would like to contribute, toilet paper rolls can be dropped off at the main office. In the Mullen, congratulations to Sienna Burke for winning the school-wide arbitrary poster contest. Her poster will be entered into the statewide competition. The PTO-sponsored Read-a-thon has begun. Please register your child for this event. Thank you to the PTO for organizing Mullen Music Bingo on Friday. The Mullen School Play, 101 Dalmatian Kids, opens on Thursday at 6:00 PM. There are over 100 students participating and therefore two casts. It runs all weekend, Friday at 6:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. In the Knopf, a special thank you to the parents, faculty, and students who have joined the rosters for our March Madness Basketball Fund Racer and Community Event on Wednesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM. We're looking forward to another great night of school spirit and community engagement. Rosters are set. Additionally, our college trips are underway. Last week, our seventh graders visited Merrimack College, while sixth graders will head to Endicott College and eighth graders will tour Suffolk University later this month. These visits are an exciting opportunity to expose our students to higher education as we continue to support the district's portrait of the graduate mission. The Intergenerational Book Club is in its second year at the Knopf. The Book Club got its start last year when Clipper crew members came to Mrs. Groskin, wanting to connect with seniors in our community. Eighth graders and members of the senior center meet to share their perspectives on an assigned book. Coordinated by eighth grade social studies teacher Jennifer Groskin-Sparling and intergenerational project senior center volunteer Liz Walsh, the group always has a lively discussion. Finally, in the high school, the slam poetry team competed this weekend in a spoken word competition in Austin. As always, the team represented Newburyport in the highest fashion. Kudos to Lala Coffey, Lucius Nelson, Rachel Kenny, and Nadia Taw.
Thank you. That's probably the most times we've said toilet paper at a school committee meeting as well.
That was, that was a lot. That was a lot of our decisions.
Super excited about two casts at the Mullen Play. Enough for two casts, that's pretty remarkable. That's going back a ways since we've had that amount of participation, so. Thank you, Mr. McKnight. All right, next item on the agenda is approval, or I guess a presentation on the onsite daycare plan update and proposed job description change.
Yes, I'll call up Ms. Kaylee, who's kind of spearheaded this project and give us all an update.
Okay, so my presentation this evening is having to do with the request for approval of the job description that you each found in your packet. And the approval is for a daycare director slash lead preschool teacher. As you're all aware, over the last couple of years, we've been working on a business plan to provide access to high-quality and affordable daycare for our staff, which in doing that, we're looking at it meeting kind of two different needs. One is on the staff side, providing access to this type of childcare onsite for staff, which would allow us to retain and recruit highly qualified staff. Additionally, we're also looking at this program to provide access to our high school students who may be interested in early childhood education to have access to a pathway for early childhood education by utilizing this program as a conduit to that, for that, for those kids that may be interested. In working collaboratively with our business staff that we're working with this year and even working with Mr. Little Hale, who was here previously, we are confident that we're creating a financially sustainable program in the first year of this program, which is in fact due to the revenue that will be provided by the program for the staff that have expressed an interest in their children coming to the program, but also for the first year to help us with the startup of the program. We did receive the donation from the Swayze Foundation, which you approved for receipt a couple of meetings ago. So those two pieces combined will provide us with a financially sustainable program in the first year. As we're looking at the first year of this program based on the staff that have expressed interest in having their children attend, we're currently looking at having four employees in the, as part of our staffing pattern. An integral part of the staffing, in addition to this, will actually be student interns that have expressed interest in working in this daycare as part of their internship program through Newburyport High School. So we have a robust internship program and that is part of what we're looking for in staffing. The way that we're looking at this, the position that you're looking at this evening, is we're looking at hiring somebody that is DESI licensed, has an early childhood educator, also is ECC certified, so they can run a daycare and has the potential to get vocational early education license, which having the early elementary license will enable them to do that. So that's, you know, that's what we're looking for so that we can both meet the needs of the preschool, early childhood education program, but also the daycare. So our expected revenue in the first year is basically based on what people will be paying for their children and then the Swayze grant. And one of the questions that I've been wrapping my head around over the last couple of years and working with our business staff is some of the costs, we want this to be a fully self-sustaining program. In order to do that, there are some costs that could potentially hit the city side in terms of insurance costs. So part of the variable that I built into the revenue projection for the first year was can we have enough money to pay the city portion of expenses for insurance? And we do believe that after looking at the numbers, that is something that we would be able to do. As we move forward with this after the first year, so we have the additional revenue from Swayze for the first year, as we move forward into year two, it is our expectation that we would have more children in the daycare for year two. And at year two, based on the projected revenues that would come in, it's the expectation that in year two and moving forward, the program would be self-sustaining without having to have the additional donation from the Swayze Foundation. So tonight, what I'm asking for is I'm asking for you to approve the position of the daycare director. And then in approving that position, what we're looking at is that is going to allow us to move forward and notify staff that we believe that this is a program that we can begin operating in September of 2025. We have a lot of staff that at this point, it's close to them being able to say yes to their current daycare and pay their deposits or saying yes to us and paying the deposits to us. So that's what I'm asking for this evening in the approval for the position. At a later meeting, if the approval goes through this evening for the daycare director, then I will also bring forward to the description of the job for the other positions within the daycare, which would just be a toddler teacher and then the infant teachers. So that's, you know, that's a high-level overview of what I'm looking for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Kaylee. Any questions for Ms. Kaylee? Yeah, Ms. Hall.
So when you say it's self-sustaining, does that include the salaries?
It does.
And the four positions, that includes this director position that we're looking at tonight?
It does.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Can you talk a little bit about the group that, you set up like an advisory group? Is that going to remain and what's your plan for sort of oversight?
Yes, so I have a daycare advisory committee made up of representatives within the school district currently. And that, it is the expectation of that group, so it's people from early childhood, it's facilities, it's Erin Hobbs, who is the pathway person at the high school. So we have a whole working group, Katie Boziolus, we're bartending now, but our nurse leader is part of the advisory committee. So there's a whole group of people that are working with me to bring this to fruition.
Great. And you have also, I understand, been working with the other school district.
Yes, so we started this, so just to take you back a little bit, this was, this whole program was kind of inspired, was brought to my attention when I met with a teacher who was having a baby and what she was talking about was the high cost of daycare. And her sister actually lived in Ipswich and had taken advantage of a daycare program that is run through the Ipswich Public Schools and has been very successfully run through the Ipswich Public Schools for many, many years. So ironically, the woman that started that program has grandchildren in the Newburyport Public Schools, so she met with the superintendent and I to talk about what it looks like and then took us over to Ipswich. So we are working, the director of Ipswich is actually, I have her on speed dial, she answers my calls, she answers a lot of questions, so she has worked with us as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Kaylee? All right, so the motion that we would be making is to approve the creation of a professional staff position for the, what is the name, what is the actual director of or lead of preschool position for the purpose of starting the daycare program as Ms. Kaylee has described? And it would be policy, I'm sorry, my eyes, because I don't bring, policy CCA. So I would accept a motion.
So.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
So one thing I noticed in the job description itself, and I don't know if you have a reason for this, but I was hoping to see in the qualification, successful experience, and there's no experience qualification in there. And so I was wondering if that is something that could be amended unless you have a reason not to put it in there?
No, I think we would obviously look for experience, so we can certainly amend that to put it in.
Yeah, if you could just put in like successful, you know, I don't know if you were looking for five years, seven years, whatever it might be, but like successful experience as a lead teacher or director position?
Sure, I can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks. Any other discussion?
Do we need to adjust the motion at all, just as amended or as discussed?
I think it can be as amended, yeah, yeah. All right, so the vote would be to approve the motion as amended by Member Higgins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, truly, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is student activity account request. I'm excited to hear about this, but I also wanted to just give a heads up that, and Superintendent, I don't know if you had a chance to review my email, but based on my reading of the policy, I'm not sure we actually, as a school committee, need to vote on this. According to our policy, we do not need to vote on creation of a student activity account. It's just, we are advised on them and we ultimately vote on the minimum or maximum balance, I think, but we don't actually have to individually vote on the creation of a new student activity account. So if anybody wants me to go into further detail on that, I looked it over today. I don't know if you have a different opinion, Superintendent Gallagher?
I just think, yeah, either way is fine with me, but I think every year, it's been past practice.
Yeah, I know, and we, and I understand that, and I think it's because we recently updated the policy and we don't require an approval, we just have very explicit oversight of what, or we detail what is required of student activity accounts and the student activity account policy should be provided to the organization that will be raising money, but it is not required that we take a vote, as far as I can tell. Okay, so if you want to go ahead and present it, I think it's an exciting, it's exciting to hear about the Women in Sports Club? Yeah.
Yes, so our, thanks for having me here tonight. So the Women's in Sports Club is a new club that's looking to form, but really with the the. a new club that's looking to form, but really with the the idea of engaging more of the community, but then the younger grades as well, in terms of supporting interests, but also with a mental health focus also. So we had a group of students that had met with me. They have an advisor in Amy Heath, who is going to be taking it on. So it sounds like they they're just looking to get started.
That's great.
So that's the plan for the organization.
Great. It's very exciting. I'm excited that this is being created and I'm enthusiastically supportive of it. I just don't think we need to vote on it. Any other questions for President, President Wolf?
Promotion.
Principal Wolf, no? All right. Great. Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Maybe you can stay right here.
All right. The next, next item is approval of the overnight field trips. And Principal?
I'm actually here tonight with Sarah Ledbeater and Stephanie Phillips. And I'll just give an overview, but they'll, they can also, if there's additional questions, we'll be able to answer, because they've just been doing some great things. So Sarah Ledbeater, who with the Real World Design Challenge, so once again, they won the state championship. And so now, as a result, they have been invited to the national tournament that takes place in Washington DC. So it's actually, this is the first time they've been doing it in person since the pandemic. They had been before, a couple of years, I think, before the pandemic, correct? Yes. And so and the NEF is going to be supporting them attending the the national competition as well. So definitely a lot of great things happening there. And that the competition happens May 2nd to May 4th, and they'll be down in Washington DC. They will be, and then with the cost for the trip, which is approximately $750 a person, that covers their their accommodations and meals, and then also their care fare. And the Newburyport Education Foundation is sponsoring the team to participate. And then with our other exciting ventures, so kind of with some restructuring last year into this year of our whole music and performing arts program. So there's a lot of great energy. And probably been about 10 years now, one thing when the program had been quite vibrant, they used to attend the Festival Disney program, which is an opportunity for schools, our drama programs from our music programs from across the country to come and participate and showcase themselves, but while also learning from Disney cast as well and getting that instruction. And so the music program, theater program is looking to revive this trip, which would happen during the April vacation of 2026. Still expenses obviously still need to be flushed out, but approximately would be around $2,500 per student. And it would be a five-day trip down to Disney from here.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on either of the programs in front of us tonight?
I'm just interested in knowing, for students where, you know, financial need is a concern, how is that approached? And what's the process that students and their families have to engage in?
So for the Disney trip, just like they had done prior, they do fundraising. And so they also have a performing arts parent group that also supports them as well. The art, the trip for the Real World Design Challenge is fully sponsored. And so that pretty much is taken care of. But then we also have through our, the Global Citizenship Program. And so that has been also doing fundraising. So we have a fund that we're able to tap into to support any student who wants to attend.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. The the motion, I think we probably would be good to vote on these separately, just so we have a record of both. So if anybody wants to take a stab at a motion for either?
Is it J J H?
J J H, yeah.
Motion to approve the real world design trip to DC, May 2nd to the 4th, in accordance with policy J J H.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say that I think it, you know, meets the qualifications for, you know, supporting our academic goals as well as, you know, it's just nice to have that recognition. And on top of that, the costs are covered. So appreciate that. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. Okay. So the other one is the Disney trip. Anyone wants to make a motion?
You're the first one, so what?
Right. So someone else has the next one.
Make a motion to approve the NHS Performing Arts Trip to Orlando in 2026, in accordance with J J H.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Level Service Budget Presentation.
Okay. So I included this just for the viewers and just for, to put everything into context, especially as we look at this year's budget. So this was a joint statement from the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents, Massachusetts School Committee, and then also school business officials. I'm not going to read the entire letter, but across the Commonwealth, I did a couple of highlights here. Residents are presented with proposed strategies to close fiscal gaps, and none which are ideal, right, which, and not in this district this time, but you see it in the newspaper, including staff layoffs, reduction in relation, elimination of program services, and even school closures throughout different communities. Although the financial situation in each district is unique, they're seeing this across the board, consistent pattern fiscal pressures across a range of all these different communities, large, small, urban, suburban, rural. Several major expenses are increasing dramatically year after year, including, as we've said multiple times, out of district placements, transportation, health insurance, utilities, and other significant line items. At the same time, most school districts funding remains relatively flat. So it's, every year it is challenging, but this year also brings some new challenges to it. So with that being said, this is a lot of the information, when we build our budget, every presentation we give to school committee and the public, we continue to add to it so people can see the chronological order of where we end up at the end. And then as always, number two is the budget assumptions, contract obligations. As you all know, this, we've been ongoing negotiations throughout this year, starting in October. And then on the right side of those, state and federal unfunded mandates. And so these are all of the different, and really just try to explain this, I guess, more to the general public. These are the fundings, these are the, I would say, populations that were required to provide educational services to. So as always, special education, English learning programs, Americans with Disabilities, 504s, transportation. So there are certain elements within the federal and state mandates that we're obligated to provide services. And it makes a lot of sense, because this is your most vulnerable population within our communities. So you want to provide them with all of the resources to provide them the greatest type of education. So when we start looking and just to take a look at this, if we have 2,100 students within the district from pre-K all the way to grade 12, there are some obligations that we can anticipate for next year, where some students are requiring services that will probably continue into next year. But remember, every month, every quarter, every half year, every year is a new, it's a new beginning for a lot of these families. So if some families are going through different processes or need required services that we haven't planned for, then we're obligated, for example, to provide that. So an easy example where a student in foster care, a student in Newburyport had to go to a foster care out of district, neighboring town, two towns over, Haverhill, we're required to provide them to and from transportation. So a scenario like that, that you don't plan for, is a fiscal obligation of the district to make sure that students' schooling is not disrupted. So when you, when you look at that as we're dealing with human beings and we're dealing with families, and as we said, everything can change, these are some of those funding mandates that we're required to do. So we do our best to predict of what type of funding sources that we're going to need for next year to cover some of those unfunded mandates. So that's, there's a whole spectrum of that, but that's when you're dealing with people just like us and our families, from last year to this year, there could be things going on that, you know, we have to address personally. On a school district, you have 2,100 of those families and kids that you're dealing with. So these are the really budget assumptions that we try to do our best and anticipate costs. So this was our last Level Service Budget, and I won't read through everything. But as we all know, I'm highlighting this piece. In addition to what we typically deal with every year as we develop our budget, the, you know, things have been kind of unprecedented and stable, planning in federal state grants, and looking at some of the changes that are happening at the national level and federal level. At this point, we've continued to plug in similar numbers that we're accustomed to seeing, but that's something that we always got to continue to watch, that we said. So as we came in our last presentation, and it was high of a city appropriation of a 7.26, and then as we went through this, the overall budget, a 3.11% increase, we received some more information, especially around contractual negotiations. And what I'll show you is kind of where we're at right now with that. And then our last presentation, the city allocation is going to go up a little bit on the chapter 70, just above $6 million. Other things are staying constant. And we presented this in our last presentation. But let me get to the new presentation for you all. So, and I'm going to go through this on the next page, kind of gives you the detail of how, where we got to to this 4.12% city allocation from the 7.2. And then the overall operational budget is at this point increasing by 1.47%. So in the past, if you all recall, we would have principals and budget holders come in and advocate for different add-ons within their schools. We, in this budget this year, it's really focused on the level service. We're not adding more staff, we're not adding more programs. Our goal here is to continue to enhance the programs that we have and maintain our programs under a level budget presentation. And the big X factor for all of us this year has been contract negotiations. As we all know, in different districts, it hasn't been as smooth or as collaborative, I guess, in coming down with the number. So as we began our budget process, starting October, November, and anticipating where the compensation packages could fall for all three unions, we kind of estimated high, because if it was going to come in high, we would have to really prepare on what that's going to look like. But through a lot of the hard work, our compensation packages, we have clearer picture of where those are falling right now. And that includes all of the salaries, the steps and lane changes for our unions, the longevity payments and expected benefits, leading to a reduction of that around $800,000 when you're looking at all three of those unions. And I'm staying in general there, but we have better numbers of where we are landing. The other piece that I think's been very helpful this year is through contracted services. Due to restructuring of Special Education Department this fiscal year, we are expected able to reduce our contracted services by delivering services in district. So around $200,000, we anticipated as an estimate, but working with Mr. Brooks and his team, we feel we can bring in a lot of those contracted services that we're paying outside of the district and bring them back into the district. The district-wide supplies, just working with our budget holders, a reduction across eight of those different areas by $70,000. And then staffing, a special education staffing, faculty and support, based on projected enrollment that we're no longer going to need for next year. So that's an estimated savings of $160,000. So that's where your city allocation from the 7.2 is now down to a 4.1. The other areas we look at is your Medicaid reimbursement. So that goes directly to the city and offsets our expenses. So any students that are on Medicaid and requiring any type of service, services, we can be reimbursed. We work with Brad and his team financially, and then we submit the reimbursements to Medicaid, and then Medicaid submits those to the city. Our preschool tuition is increased slightly. Other tuition collected through special ed and exchange programs, we really don't, I'm going to see a change. And with some of the issues that we're seeing with visas and across the nation right now, our exchange program, you know, might not have as many students next year, but we're monitoring that. Our school choice tuition, level service, we used $800,000. We're going to increase that to another $150,000 in school choice, which helps bring down the overall cost of the budget. And then our revolving accounts, projected on actual revenues for FY '25 year to date, building rentals, that's the $32,000 that's already been accounted for, and then transportation projections on actual revenues year to date. Our entitlement grants, as I was saying, with the federal government, it's something that we're watching, but we're anticipating some reduction in Title I, Title II, and IV. Right now, we're anticipating that, but we haven't seen any of that coming out of the federal government. And then the level funding for IDA, special education, we're anticipating no change. But those are two areas that we're definitely watching. Our circuit breaker reimbursement, we've increased $250,000 in that to bring that actual overall budget to the 1.47. So the top piece here on the city allocations, this is how we reduce from the seven down to the 4.1. And then just some additions within our revenue funds that we have, that's how we bring the overall budget down to that 1.47. As I keep scrolling, you know, we've already talked about the demographic trending.
Can you just wait till he finishes?
Yeah, I can take questions right after. But I also wanted to show, we added a new slide here to the end. And we covered these, I think, in our last meeting, school choice. But this one last is just really the city trends overall. So I went back to 2016, and you see it broken down by the overall budget and then the city allocation. allocation. So for our past few years, for the city allocation, we've kind of been, as you can see, in the 4% or so. So it's not where stressing the city allocation side, I think, a lot. I think we're in the realm of kind of what we've been projecting. I know where we're at right now, at the 4.1 city allocation, I believe we can bring that down just a little bit more for our April 7th public hearing and be in that 3%, 3.5 type of a range. And then our overall increase will be minimal this year as we move forward into next year.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. I know Member Higgins has a question.
I just had a quick question on the, the circuit breaker. How did the circuit breaker go from to get increased up by $2 million?
Circuit breaker is, that's what we anticipate our revenue coming in for next year, the 2 million.
It didn't, well, it was, it was three, it's decreased, actually.
Right. We're spending more circuit breaker than we have in the past.
Oh, yeah, but wait, this page right here, page eight? I was just trying to understand that new projection of 2.25 change from.
It went up, $250,000.
Correct, we added.
I, I was a little confused.
I was like, how did we find $2 million?
Yep. I know, that is, the wording is a little confused.
It's going down.
Oh, okay.
But maybe you could just speak to that. So last year's allocation, our budget was 3 million.
Correct.
And we're anticipating a $775,000 decrease, just based on our.
Of what we've been spending. So we, we've, this year, coming into this, who we have to balance last year's budget, we use a lot of those revolving accounts, and we use a lot more circuit breaker than we typically have done in the past. Typically, we carry circuit breaker over. It's not a lot, but enough to get, you know, for the addition replacements and things like that. So we've spent down that revolving account to a level where it's, it's, it's pretty low. So going into next year, one of the fiscal goals would be to build up, as we go through the fiscal year next year, is to really try to build that circuit breaker back up.
Okay, so we, we have used or anticipate to use more circuit breaker than we budgeted last year.
We maximize that circuit breaker to balance that, yeah. And having Mike Wood in the team, that's one area as we move into next year's fiscal budgeting, that we really just want to make sure that we maintain that circuit breaker for special education costs.
Other questions?
Just, yeah, following up on that. So that the $250,000 that you added in this version is just saying we're going to maybe dig a little deeper into that.
Correct.
Account?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that, so if you look at the two, the pieces that, with the contracts and the first outline, kind of brings your city allocation down, and now we don't have much, I would say, you don't have much wiggle room in a sense with some of these other revolving accounts, but we did add some of that in there to bring your overall budget down to that 1.47. So the city allocation went down, but also our overall budget grand total goes down to that minimal increase. But with this, and as we continue, and for your April 7th budget, you'll have the whole budget book, and you'll see every line item, and then the comments that you used to of where that is highlighted. But as we, as we go through this, this budget and get into, I think, a place for the school committee and the city to feel comfortable, the ultimate goal is to maintain all of our programs and then to continue to move those programs forward. So the next round is really for us now to start really looking at staffing patterns in the sense of getting a solid number on some of our retirees and the reduction of, you know, their salaries could be added into this, and then looking at staffing where do, if we have someone retiring, do we need to replace that position at this time? So there are some of those conversations that we'll have in the next few weeks that we believe we can get the city allocation down into the, into the 3%. But the ultimate goal is, I don't, we don't want to lose the momentum after seven years. I mean, you just read about the music program and the theater program. We've brought all of those back. We brought foreign language back, and we'll do everything that we can to balance this budget, but continue to maintain all of our programming.
Other questions?
What's up?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just, you've discussed this before, but there's been a lot of questions about the federal funding mechanism. Could you just talk about the estimated decrease in the Medicaid?
So the Medicaid is, right now, any, Medicaid, when we have any students that are on Medicaid that receive any type of services, and it's nursing services, special education services, we can build back Medicaid for that. So we keep, so for example, if one student, we could be reimbursed if they're receiving certain services, we can reimburse by Medicaid. So one student might be $4,000 of reimbursement. Another student might be getting more services through Medicaid, and then, so we add that up. We submit that to Medicaid, but Medicaid takes, it looks, Medicaid looks at the entire city, so they don't break it down by the schools, you know what I'm saying? So if the school sent $200,000 over to the city, it doesn't mean the schools are receiving that. So it's, the Medicaid reimbursements go to the city. And then typically, as we go through our budget and city appropriation, one area that the city has done is $100,000 of Medicaid reimbursement back to the schools. So that's kind of how that, that works. So we don't, it's not like circuit breaker. When we fill out the information on circuit breaker, that circuit breaker money, 75% reimbursement over the threshold, comes right back into the schools. Medicaid's a little bit different, it goes into the city.
Why would the city not give us all of that money if it's for these specific kids?
It's just, it's, it's one area that, you know, they, you know.
They have some discretion about how they allocate that, and that's a good question for the city council.
If it's, if it is specifically for specific students, then.
It goes into one, one big.
It doesn't matter. The number is still the number, and the number of kids is still a number. It should come back, and then the rest of the Medicaid goes to the other non-school population in the city.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good topic for the Thursday meeting.
I will write that down.
All right.
That's projected to be lower this year.
We're projecting that to be lower.
Is there, is there a thought process behind that?
Yeah, like some of the students don't require, either don't require those services, or some of the students may have graduated last year.
So the numbers.
That we're seeing, yeah. So the number's going to fluctuate depending on the student. Some students, you know, and we do this like every month, we calculate, because there could be some new students requiring new services that we didn't have last month either. So that's just like a projecting that we, we feel the Medicaid's going to trend down for this year.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Yeah.
I also have a question about Medicaid, because I know with some students, their parents will opt not to sign off on Medicaid because they get services outside of the school in addition to, you know, to support them in the home, so, and in, in the community. So, I mean, that's another thing. I think that a lot of families can just say, we don't.
They don't want to fill out the form.
Yes, and rightfully so, if their kids have significant needs.
We need permission.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and it's, and be, and just, you know, with, with a lot of the changes and a lot of the, you know, outside of Newburyport, there are a lot of families less likely to provide information for that, too.
Right, and it depends on whether Medicaid is your primary or your secondary insurance as well, what the rate is.
So we, we work with the families and we, you know, ask, but you need permission to utilize their information to reimburse them. It's 100% accurate.
Is that annual?
Annual, yeah.
Can you just explain, I know, we all know, but just for the general public and everybody watching later on, the part of circuit breaker, how it's a year behind all the time? Can you just talk about that, how that works in terms of our budget? We're always, what we're budgeting for for next year is for the following year.
Correct, yeah. So your, so your expenses for circuit breaker is, you know, anything over the threshold, which is around $50,000, at your 75% reimbursement. So with that being said, so the current students that you have, you're making those calculations of, so we're utilizing circuit breaker from last year off of what we received, and now this year's circuit breaker is, we're calculating these students for the following year. So you're always kind of like one year behind, you're spending the funding from last year to cover for your last year's expenses. Did I do all right?
I think.
Thank you.
Maybe I can just follow up on that with the school, with the school choice. To me, at school choice is a similar situation, I might be wrong, where, you know, we're, we don't actually know what we're going to get in terms of revenue for school choice because we're deciding on how many people to accept, and there's no guarantee we're going to get all of those people, and we don't, so we can't really depend on that. We have to budget for it once we know what we have. So to follow that, I'm, I am concerned that we continue to tap into the school choice, you know, more, we continue to increase how much we're pulling out of that account, and it is a buffer for unexpected expenses, and I am concerned about that. It would be helpful to know what our balance is. I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, but as we have further conversations, I would like to know what our anticipated balance is, even after pulling from this again this year. And then, you know, I'm also looking at the, the cut of $70,000, which doesn't sound like a lot, but what I don't want to see happen is us pushing expenses, pushing, you know, burdens down on families who are without a doubt going to feel a lot of pressure this year. And people are losing jobs, they are going to lose jobs, and this is going to be a really tumultuous year for a lot of families, as every year can be. But, but I just don't want to see, I mean, I appreciate sort of tightening our belts on, on the supplies and materials, but I would not like that to result in us turning around and saying to families, "Well, sorry, we had to, you know, tighten our belts. PTO, can we add to your wish list?" Which you already have problems with, right, Mr. Callen? So I, I think, I'm just going to say that, you know, that $70,000, it's a little bit concerning to me because, you know, again, it's like, you know, getting less pencils or paper supplies. I'd rather be doing things that are a little bit, I don't know, but to me, that's a little, I get concerned about the potential for this falling down onto families.
I agree with you, and that's something that, you know, when we work with principals, not depleting all of their supplies and materials, and what could you reduce? And I think there might be 3% of their supplies overall. So we don't want to, exactly what you said, you don't want to cut supplies and then go to parents and say, "Oh, we need XYZ," so their costs go up. So that's something we're very aware of as we start going through this. I think we'll have, as I said, looking at our staff, the next, the next iteration of this is really digging deep on our staffing patterns, looking at the retirement savings, looking to see if we can, you know, not have to replace some people or some of the, you know, hold off on one position for this year and look at adding into the budget for next year. So there's a lot of those conversations that are going on right now.
And on that note, we may have FTE increased, we may increase FTE, doesn't mean we're necessarily increasing our budget. Because that's a question the city council really focused on last year, was that we aren't, that we, we are, we are providing staffing levels based on what is required, we're required to provide, but we can still have decrease in costs if we're strategic about that.
Correct, and it's, the increase in, in the personnel goes, goes back to that federal and state mandates. So you might, we might be, depending on students' needs, so for example, if there's a student zombie can affect their progress, and they go through an IP process, and it's determined by the team the student needs one-on-one support, well, we didn't plan on hiring that, you know, so those meetings, and that's what's hard, I think, when you're working predominantly in a school setting where 75% of your budget's, right, faculty, and you're dealing with 2,100 different families with different challenges, that can happen to any one of us. It could be a death of the family, it could be a divorce, it could be drug involved, it could be, you know, all of those things that can happen to anyone's family, then we need to provide those students with that support so they can get back on their feet. And in some of those scenarios, you don't have a choice, that you, you need to provide those funds for those students. And it makes sense, your most vulnerable families or people going through some really tough times, especially kids, you know, they need that support, so.
And they're legally mandated to, we're legally mandated to provide it, which is also an important message. Yeah, Mr. Berger.
Outside of those legally mandated unforeseen circumstances, there was some indication that there, you're not projecting increases in full-time positions. Is that still fair to say?
About adding more full-time positions? Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, we're actually reducing, and the first area is the special education at high school, which is $160,000 savings of personnel.
Right, so Mr. Berger, thank you for that clarification. So net gain of positions is anticipated to not, like, not increase, but we may, we may change positions here and there.
And related, in case some members of the public or members of the city council are watching, just because we increase choice numbers, we do not increase sections of elementary school or middle school.
Correct.
So we do not hire new staff because we have more students.
Correct.
And if a student happens to have special needs and comes from another city, the other city pays those fees.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that was on the record, again.
Thank you, Mr. Callen.
Yes.
Any other questions about the budget presentation tonight? How about any additional information you're hoping we'll see next time? Anything come to mind?
Well, no more. When's the, the budget hearing?
The 7th.
That's our next meeting.
You'll have the full budget packet with the line items.
So, and we'll have contract negotiations on the 2nd, and we may be finished, so then we'll know exactly what those numbers are?
Correct. And just that, that whole process, you know, the whole negotiation, so once you have a tentative agreement, just in general, I'm speaking.
Do we need to pause and double-check that comment? Is that correct? Ms. Keely? Ms. Keely, is that correct, the statement that was just made about the contract?
Yeah, we're moving, yeah, we're moving forward. So just in general, just for all contracts, you come to a tentative agreement between both sides, then once it's finalized, there's an MOU that's created, then the union has to ratify that MOU. Once that's ratified, school committee goes into executive.
Session.
Session. Executive session? I mean, how many times do I say that?
It's okay.
And then you ratify, and then you come out, and then you have a new contract. So we're very, as Mr. Callen said, we're very close. We have a better understanding, as I said, just in general with all three unions, remember there's three unions involved, that those numbers and the compensation packages are coming in where I feel, I guess, good of presenting kind of where we're at for the overall budget. And I just want to thank, I think also I want to credit our union and union presidents and negotiating teams in the whole district for understanding the economic challenges that we all are having right now, and them to bring a collaborative lens and to this process has been amazing. So I think we're very lucky to have the faculty and support staff that we have here. So it's been a lot of work, but our negotiations have been pretty positive overall.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Superintendent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the high school competency policy. I don't know. You've done a lot of talking, Superintendent, but do you want to? Member Higgins, do you feel like talking about this one?
Well, I don't think there's been any changes, right? This is a second read of the competency determination policy. It has been reviewed by the high school, the high school council, uh, school council, thank you, the school council, the teaching and learning subcommittee, and the policy subcommittee, so we can take a motion to approve that policy.
Yeah, and just, it's an addendum to our current policy, IKF, it'd be sort of like a, we do, we usually typically label it IKF-R, so it would just be part of the same policy, but sort of an addendum. Do you like to make that motion? Do you like to make that motion?
Sure. So I move to add the high school competency determination policy to IKR.
IKFR, yeah.
FR.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right.
I would just ask for the, the committee, were there, was that a lengthy discussion about what the determinations might be?
I think we felt pretty good about how it was presented to us, that the way, based on the guidance from the state right now, we need to have coursework that corresponds to the standards that were tested in the last MCAS exam. So, you know, it's a, it would be a pretty narrow set of coursework requirements that we have here, so that you're English 9 and 10, math 9 and 10, you know, one, one year of science, et cetera. So, you know, I think it, there doesn't leave a whole lot of room for discussion. And so I think the, the biggest question we would have is, do we have rigorous coursework that actually align with our standards? And Principal Wolf and, and the superintendent feels strongly that we do have coursework that they have done an audit of, is aligned to the standards, the state standards. And so it was, it was fairly easy and then it was a, we talked a lot about exact language around students who might have received a certificate of attainment in the last 20 years that did not pass MCAS and how would they go about getting their diploma or like transfer students, kind of those little smaller nuances. And then we know that this might need to be adjusted in the future based on what comes out of the governor's graduation council.
Great. So, so you still do have to abide by the standards to some degree, meaning, not that you'd want to do this, but in theory, a, a district couldn't come up with a, a more stringent aspirational set of determinations. Could you add?
I think it might be the opposite. So you can still be more, you can certainly be more, more rigorous, you can't be a less.
Okay.
We do, if you look at what's posted here, those are our graduation requirements, which is quite a bit more than the competency determination.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, like you could, I mean, in theory, one could say you need to have both biology and physics. Again, I'm not saying that you'd want to, but.
Yeah, so I think the, you know, it's a matter of making sure that you're following the, the language and the law, that your, your coursework matches the MCAS program requirements. So essentially, like you couldn't have a student just take, you know, life science and then be all set. Or a lot of people have, you know, I forget whether we have two years or three years, you know, whatever it is, but you couldn't have students take personal finance, something else, right? Like they have to have.
Specific to the algebra standards.
They have to take algebra, they have to take geometry. You couldn't have them take a, you know, a less rigorous three years of math. It has to be those, those requirements.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Higgins, that was helpful. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vice chair votes aye. Okay, subcommittee updates, finance subcommittee.
Yes, we met last Thursday, went over current fundraisers, went through a very detailed financial statement, and we are going to have a simplified version by cost center for the joint meeting on Thursday with city council members. And that was basically the entirety of the meeting, really, was just going over that. CIP update, which is actually in tonight's packet, right? The simplified version.
Yeah, the one that you guys are accustomed to seeing.
Yes, okay, I don't know what to call that, the original version, I guess. So related, Thursday, between 4:00 and 5:00 at Newburyport High School library is the joint finance subcommittee and their budget and finance members, I believe councillors Khan and Zied are attending. They are not able to do an of the whole because of procedural stuff at the city council, but they, anybody can come and councillor Zied can appoint five of their members to be able to speak, but for our end of things, it's of the whole, so anybody can come and can all talk.
And you can, it's hybrid.
And it's going to be Zoomed too, yeah. The link to the Zoom is in the public meetings calendar.
I just have a question about that.
Yeah.
So has the whole city council been invited?
I presume councillor Zied has told them about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item is policy subcommittee, we did not meet this month.
No, we did not.
All right, communications subcommittee.
Also not meeting this month, I canceled the meeting because of the, the joint FinCom happening on Thursday, pretty much takes place of communications for this month.
Okay, great. Teaching and learning subcommittee.
We met on March 6th. We did a lot at that meeting, so if anyone has additional questions, feel free to follow up, but let me just go through my notes. First, we reviewed the school council calendar and how the school council informs the school improvement plans on a biannual basis. And so I think one of the important items that we discussed in regards to that calendar was that although principals and school leadership teams start talking about their priorities and initiatives for the following year in the winter, when they're setting their budgets for the next year and their staffing and a lot of those things, the school council, which then provides input and votes to approve those things, they don't get voted on and sat until the fall. And so I think one of, one of my concerns that we discussed a little bit in that meeting was whether or not that natural calendar actually, can that throw the leadership team off track? Because they might be getting feedback from either their school council or this group in the fall, which is, or late fall, which is really mid-school year, you know, that they've already set these plans in motion, they've budgeted for it, they staffed it, they created priorities, and then they might be getting alternate feedback from us when it's actually too late to implement that feedback. And so I wanted to have a better understanding of that calendar so that potentially we need to adjust either when we're looking at things, our lens on whether we're offering approval, if we're just listening for information, if we're giving feedback for the following year, because I, I do think that that calendar is really important, that if we're giving, if we're, if we're giving any critical feedback to something in November, it's actually a little bit too late for a school to actually implement that. So I wanted to get a better sense of the calendar and how we can kind of offer that feedback in a little bit more of a timely way moving forward. Then we went through a data presentation from the mid-year. We talked about ELA, just their, the data cycles that happened in both ELA and math at the Breznerhan, the Mullen and the NOC, the intervention systems that they have. So the Breznerhan has, it's for ELA, they have 40 interventionists that are able to service 80 students. The Mullen has one interventionist, can service 20 students. Math has two interventionists at the Breznerhan and one at the Mullen. What I found good about that was that they are looking at a rank order of students and their performance. And so when they look from lowest to highest, or they're looking at students in the red on their, on their I-Ready exams, they're actually able to service every single student that shows up in the red or below the 25th percentile and even some up into the yellow as well. So that just tells us that our staffing patterns are really strong, there's enough staff there to service every student who needs that, that intervention. I don't have, I didn't write down the exact numbers, so I have the presentation, if anyone needs to see it, on just what our growth is looking like overall from the beginning of the year to mid-year and in some cases, which is, they have a data cycle that I think is really strong, that they're talking about on an individual student level and then on a classroom level, what does our growth look like this year as compared to last year and what needs to be adjusted in terms of instruction for the second half of the year to improve or maintain those growth numbers. I think that I do, and so then the last thing that I wanted to share, because I did find this really important and it, it speaks to some of our concerns that we had about the math instruction, is that there's a really targeted professional development program happening with Mr. Littlefield at the NOC. And so he, in his role, was a somewhat retired person, you know, he's coming back in to work with the teachers in professional development to look at their curriculum materials, some structural challenges that are happening at the classroom level, data analysis by standard, how do they better vertically align, you know, what is happening at, in math at the middle school level and how that might be exposing gaps that would have happened at the lower levels, right? And how do we sort of bridge a lot of those things? And so I'm really excited about the work of that task force. It looks like into the spring, he'll be doing more classroom observations and coaching with individual teachers, which again, I think is exciting that, you know, we're trying to find the root cause of what are our math scores, you know, telling us and then, and then solving the issue there. And so I think that that's really important and that's where we're actually are using our budget really wisely, the people that we already have and the expertise that we already have to really direct the instructional improvement where we're at. So that was a lot of information.
No, that's great. What is the next, thank you for that. I do, I think we should continue that, the CIP conversation maybe at the school committee level, but, and then I guess, what is the timing of the next data presentation? When do we anticipate that would happen at the school committee level? Because I know, it's helpful that there, that you go over that at your committee level. I don't know, you know, we don't need to necessarily get into that level of detail. Are we anticipating another?
So we typically, I think for the next few meetings, it's all about budget.
It's all about budget, absolutely, 100%.
Probably once, I would say after April, I think you vote, school committee votes on the budget the last week of April and then maybe look at a presentation in May.
Okay, yeah.
May, late May to maybe highlight the work that's been done in math, throughout the entire year or something.
Great, yeah, no, that was very helpful, appreciate all the work that's been done at that committee. Any questions?
No, I just also want to credit Mr. Littlefield for, I mean, extraordinary math teacher, a legend in Newburyport. But what it really has done for us is as he's working with all of our math teachers, including the interventionists, he brings a credibility to the work because he's already a proven, you know, extraordinary math teacher. So the collaboration that's happening throughout the district, I don't, as Ms. Higgins said, I don't think you could have got from any other outside consultant or anything. He is just so genuine, really cares and, and he knows the content inside and out, so.
Great.
He's been a great, he's been a great addition, so. Although you try to retire from Newburyport, we drag you back.
Pull you back in.
It's like Ms. Shaw, she brought you in, right?
Kind of like the mafia, get the cure out and then they pull you back in.
That's right. All right, well, thank you for that update. We can move on to the superintendent's report. Because we need to have more time to talk.
No, I'm not, this will be quick. So, and this will probably be discussed in the next curriculum meeting, but just SOA Plan, Student Opportunity Act, Ms. Ferlong and her team are working on that and will be submitted by April 1st. And then just some of the key areas that they're looking for in that grant, the update of that grant. Transportation, we did talk about this, I tried to break it down for everyone of the riders. The current bus fees has been $300 per child, up to two, and a hundred dollars after that for additional child. So that, we haven't changed those fees and I know at FinCom, we had a discussion of that. And so I just want to provide the school committee just some updates on how many riders that we've had. And then remember back with the transportation task force that we reduced the mileage waiver from two to 1.5 miles, so students at 1.5 miles can ride the bus for free. So those revenues are down there, which just shows you the, kind of the change over the last couple of years. And I just want to provide that information for everyone.
Thank you. I want to comment on the transportation fees because I do think that it's, it's nice to see the trend going up from after we reduced it. I think the 2023, 2024 wasn't just because we changed the mileage, I think it was, it was a carryover from COVID and relatives to ride the bus. And as Member Hall pointed out earlier today, we also are, by providing more people the opportunity to ride the bus, once they get past a certain age, they now are using the bus and at that point, they can't, they aren't, they have to pay to use the bus.
I think beyond sixth grade, it's not, it's not free anymore, so.
So it does, it instills habits that maybe can be continued and ultimately, you know, there's some, there's some bus fees that, that end up, we get later on. So I think that trend looks like it's going in the right way.
Yeah.
All right.
I was sharing the information.
Just had to comment, couldn't help myself.
I'm just the messenger.
I know. All right, so.
And then, and then just the last piece, so these are preliminary and for our next school committee, I'll give the full presentation breakdown, but these are some of the grade levels and potential openings for next school year. And then the other piece too is I'll, I'll bring some data, although we open up seats, all seats are taken. So I'll show how many seats that we've opened up, how many people have applied, and then actually how many people have come to Newburyport, because sometimes they put in for school choice and by the summertime, they withdraw, so. But I'll give better numbers, I mean, I'll give the, the whole overview for that before you all need to vote, so.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Berger.
Yeah, just on that, this will obviously, this precipitates a much longer discussion, which will, which will be great. There, there has been some thought in, in the past and some discussion from other members as well, that the grade nine numbers are quite high and just ask you to continue to think about that and how that affects the culture of the high school and what those numbers might look like. So just a thought going forward.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Superintendent? All right, thank you. So next item is any new business?
I'll just jump in with the CPAC update. CPAC was on the 27th of February. The next meeting is April 17th. There was also a Zoom presentation on basic rights and understanding the IP that took place last Thursday. The April, May and June dates will all be in person. It was a nice turnout on the 27th. I think there's some good momentum with the new chairs. And just looking forward to seeing, one thing that's coming up is they're creating a committee for CPAC awards to teachers. So parents are going to nominate teachers that have been working with their kids and have been very successful, so I think that's really a nice way to honor the teachers.
That's great.
So that will be coming up in May.
Cool. Thank you, Ms. Shaw, for that update. Any other new business?
I just have in the packet and we provided that, it's up there, Mr. McSweeney provided the old.
Yes.
And then you can see the new capital project scores on each one of those projects. So more detail for the school committee.
Yeah, how would, would we like to have more conversation about this during the budget hearing, potentially? Is that typically what we would do or do people care?
I don't know, it seems like a lot of those things have been on there for years and years and years and if the city council is not going to be willing to give us the money, then, you know, it's just information.
Well.
Unless Mr. McSweeney is going to move forward, you had said he was interested in doing some projects kind of in-house, with his own staff, I mean, if they can, you know, start repairing concrete gaps on the staircases and things like that that are kind of Band-Aids, that would be great.
All right, based on that, why don't we plan to have a little small presentation about this with the budget discussion on the 7th?
Yeah.
So just have a presentation on these items as well as the other budget?
Sure.
Okay.
It was very helpful, the estimated cost by year.
Yes.
So you could break it down and see, some of these are for the future and that was great.
I appreciate the extra effort to, to go back to the old form, but I think it would be helpful, you could have that. All right, any other new business?
A plug for, people have all received invitations from the Human Rights Commission to the community IFTAR, which is taking place on March 2. to the community Iftar, which is taking place on March 27th. And I just wanted to encourage people, school committee members, as well as any members from the school community and the greater community to attend. Hey, it's a free meal. There is a panel discussion that will kick it off with adults from the community, and then some, a few from outside the community, but there'll be students also presenting regarding Ramadan, what an Iftar is, and other questions will be presented. Then there'll be the prayer at sunset, and then from there will be the meal. So it's really, it's a very heartwarming occasion. We began these Iftars prior to the Afghan newcomers arriving here, so this has been going on, should have looked it up, I think, since 2018. So if you haven't been to an Iftar, you should come.
Thank you. All right. So that concludes our new business. We do have an executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So somebody would like to make a motion for us to go into executive session? The wording is on the agenda.
Up, up. I move that the school committee go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, possible litigation, and legal matters, and will not reconvene in an open session.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
May Braden Zabson, Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Andrew Goldberg?
Yes.
Brian Callahan?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Kathleen Shaw?
Yes.
Julia Walker?
Yes.
Thank you.